All right. Good evening, and welcome everyone to the August 26, 2024 Tuolton City Council Work Session. We have three items on the agenda tonight. First thing is the update on community involvement organizations or our CIO program, and that will be led by Kathy, Ed, and Patricia. Welcome. Come on up. It's like, no, I'm not going up there.
Ed's not going to join us, so we'll flip this here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got one more drawing.
There you are, Janine. There she is.
We'll get it figured out.
Welcome all. Good to see you all.
This is sort of an example of how we work.
Hey, you're here. That's what matters.
That's right. And it all works out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Thank you very much for the invitation to come and talk. I'm Kathy Holland. I'm the president of the Commercial CIO, and I'm one of the old timers in this project. Ed, Casey, and I were laughing. We're always the ones going back in 2016. Anyway, tonight, we've got Patricia Parsons, IBAC CIO President, Tim Neary, who's the Byram CIO President, and Janine Wilson, who's the President of the River Park CIO. As you guys are aware, the leadership team meets every couple months to talk about issues. Okay, let's go. Who are we? Just quickly, we're volunteers. We care about the community. We are independent from each other. We've been active since 2011, when we were formed by an ordinance that this city council approved. And there are some issues, like our boundaries, that the city council has to review and approve. So there's some matters that we're going to talk about tonight that actually need your approval. And then headline, we're here for money. We're governed by seven separate boards, and we try to coordinate our efforts, but each is independent, subject to what's going on in their area. Tonight's discussion is on these points. Our grant program of $1,500, we'd like to see increased to $2,500. We need to get event insurance. We need you to review the, or the city, to review the boundary map, and you to approve new boundaries, because we've added quite a bit of residential area since the original boundaries were formed. We have issues we'd like to raise on communication with developers. We are reviewing reasons of whether or not we should incorporate as Oregon nonprofits, and maybe with a charity tax status. And we'd like to suggest, if it's agreeable, that we set up an annual check-in date. It seems to us we're kind of sandbagging you with about five years' worth of issues, but with COVID and everything else, we've had varying activities. So what we'd like to do is, you know, touch base annually with what's going on. What do I point at? Oh, there we go. Okay, Tim, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So, you know, like asking for more money is always like, oh, great. So really, what we're asking for is primarily just a update. Sorry. Primarily just an update for inflation adjustment, since the grant program was initiated back in 2011. So just by the numbers, $1,500 in 2011 is about $2,100 today. So really, it's primarily an adjustment for that. And then after looking at potential liability insurance coverage for one annual event, depending on what exactly the event is, it ranges, but middle ground is around $400-ish there. So yeah, that's some of the justification for what we're asking for. Of course, if you'd like to do more, we wouldn't complain. Another piece, too, is how the grant funding tends to be viewed by the CIOs is we tend to, a lot of CIOs and our treasures, tend to look at it kind of like a credit card limit, and it is up to that amount, not that we use that amount every year. And some CIOs, maybe like Byram, have some conservative treasures that don't like the idea of getting close to that limit. So raising the limit, I think, can provide a little bit more motivation to actually use the funds for the community as intended.
Yeah, I would just say that there was quite a bit of discussion amongst our CIO leadership about why we would ask for more money, when there have been many times where CIOs have not even used the annual amount allowed. And it really is a matter of the amount that we have available isn't necessarily sufficient to do what we might want to do. So yeah, you can get maybe a park bench, or you can get topers on the street signs, but that really isn't something that touches the community, which is what our CIOs are really set out to do. So many of us have started to have events. IBAC had our first fair this year with Byram, and it was a success. We want to do it again, but it's expensive. It does touch the community. It brings the community together, which is really what we are all set to do.
As somebody who's been with the program, we actually didn't have our first grant until 2013, but when, the amount was set in 2011. So for those of you looking at that date. We also want to mention Megan George, who's our staff support. Show of hands, who thinks Megan is wonderful? Okay. Okay, event insurance. Tim, if you want to...
Sure. So this is follow-up from the previous slide on just where those numbers came from. So reviewed a handful of different companies that do provide a single-day event liability insurance. These were not crazy asks, not like, hey, we're going to provide a bunch of booze for everyone, kind of events. No rock bands or bounce houses or anything where people could get hurt. So tried to keep it pretty realistic with a lot of events that we've talked about as a group, so some different examples there. So like the holiday party kind of thing, that was, and of course, they classify these based on their own definitions, but yeah, Byram, speaking from our experience, what we're trying to do is a consistent, like, holiday light parade, like watch party event kind of thing, but that would require some degree of liability coverage for that. The Byram Fair, Byram IABAC Fair, that one, I think, across the board, was averaging, yeah, around 350-ish for events like that, which I think that's the most common event type that we look at. Outside of this, I looked at some other ones that CIOs could look at in the future, things like fun runs, 5Ks, other community events like that. And for whatever reason, they are a little bit less than the fair prices. I think they were around like 150 to 200 across the board. But at the end of the day, any event that the CIO covers should have some degree of liability coverage, and it all costs a little bit.
I'd like to just add into that, that we're not talking about crazy stuff like bounce houses, but what if we did want to expand and have a band? Or you guys all served hot dogs? And we all think about that as just, well, that's no big deal. It's a hot dog. But what happens if somebody gets sick? We just want to make sure that we are not setting ourselves up for potential failure. So that's where this insurance piece comes in to play.
Now, River Park got food handling licenses. Janine, do you want to speak to that?
And we had a one-day license with the health department, as far as to be able to serve food, a permit. And then three of us had got food handler licenses.
And you were inspected.
So no one was going to get sick. Oh, and we were inspected, too.
And we were inspected.
On site, yeah. So...
And just, Janine, what did it, do you recall what it cost to get the permit or the food handler's license?
Food handlers were $10 each. And I think with the city, we, I mean, with this county, we had a bit of a discount. We used the city nonprofit number. So we were allowed, though.
So the insurance, we haven't had in the past, because we've been not exactly grandfathered in, but covered by the volunteer insurance. But we've been notified by the city that we're no longer covered by it. In fact, we weren't really covered by it. We don't really understand all of it. We have to go get insurance. So in order for us to do community events, we need insurance, which we haven't been buying. Who wants to do the boundaries?
Move the mics closer to you, please. Please, thank you. Let's do the boundaries.
The boundaries, you're all aware of the major expansion that occurred in the southern part of Tuolton. In addition, there were quite a few homes put in what is our East CIO. The other thing that happened was there were some apartments across the river that weren't originally in the East CIO that have been added. When the CIOs were originally created, they tried to have approximately the same number of residents in each CIO. We're out of balance. So we don't know if there needs to be another CIO, or if the boundaries need to change, but it's really a staff analysis of what should happen. And then, of course, we would all have an opinion. That'll be interesting.
That will be.
With, I mean, the area south of town, a huge number of potential residents coming in there, and we just want to make sure that they are included and represented by the CIOs, and they're not excluded. Right now, the only means to add properties is piecemeal, and it seems really inefficient. We don't really want a checkerboard CIO map, nor do we want to spend the time, like, knocking door-to-door, like, hey, do you want to be part of the CIO? So city redrawing would be very easy. And yeah, we're, I think, generally open, as far as if that means new CIOs, expanding CIO boundaries, we just want to make sure that all the residents of Tuolton are represented.
And originally, the apartments and condos in downtown were not included. And they've been bundled up into the Commercial CIO because of the land use designation, and they really should be part of a residential. We've been glad to represent them, but they really aren't a commercial entity. So this would be a follow-up project we would encourage the city to undertake, and that we'd work with them. Anything else? Janine?
Talk about this. There's been some misinformation.
Speaking of the microphone.
Some misinformation as far as River Park is going through a little issue there with the Lamb expansion, and they thought of a driveway going onto Tuolton Road. So I think that this whole slide is just about the communication between the CIOs and the council and the city, the city staff. River Park CIO was not informed of or invited to the community meeting that was set up. I received an email from a community group, another one, Oregon Air, actually, that talked about the meeting on the, got that on the 2nd of June, and went to the meeting on the 5th. There were some very, very angry citizens. They did the mailing to 1,000 feet, but the apartments down there, it only went to the apartment owner and not to those individual residents. You know, the reality is, is the way that Tuolton Road is set up, is that its residences are on one side, and its companies are on the other side. And it's a real strong feeling that Levington was built for the purpose of the businesses there to have access in and out of the business. I guess they're really, they were really concerned about fearing that if a light is put in, or if they have that driveway at 115th, is that their workers are going to, you know, travel down 115th to Hazelbrook, make your left, and then jump on 99 West, going up toward the Tiger-type area and that. So there, again, you know, they were asking mostly about that. I would like the city to provide a link to the approved master plan for the Lamb site, and confirm that the proposed plan matches the master plan. If the master plan approved a full access to Tuolton Road and 115th, then this would mean removal of a fire gate, and then you're going to have some safety issues there. All the traffic improvements can be made regardless of the development application, and working with the city engineer and the public work staff will probably be more fruitful to discuss possible traffic calming measures that the citizens are quite upset about. In the future, it would be helpful if a city staff could attend the community meetings that are set up. It, I mean, they should not wear any city ID, because that meeting got pretty hot, but I felt in a sort of conflicted there, is that being a partner with the city, the city was being attacked by the residents, as well as Lamb was given a little bit of inaccurate information, too. And so I hate it to be a, I have to come back and mention to Megan, or to my partners here, is that, whoa, that's, you know, there are a lot of really upset people, and they haven't been advised all the way. What I plan to do with all this miscommunication is to ask if we could use, the city allows us to mail all our residents once a year, is that we use that mailing to advise at the next meeting that either Lamb has, they were to have one in August, and this is the end of August, and we haven't heard, or at the, I don't know if the architectural review is a process that citizens can attend. And so we would want to alert all River Park to that meeting, maybe get a better understanding.
And that gets us to the nut of it. In the past, the city council has put requirements on what was novellus when the property first went in, including this tree-lined Tuolton Road. We've been told that the architectural review will only hold them to the standard that their zoning requires. That's how they're getting this done. The other thing that's upsetting is that Joelle Davis, when she was on the city council, moved the traffic light from 115th down to Tuol, or down to Teton in the Tuolton Transportation Plan. By magic, it has shown up again at 115th, and it's cited by the developer. We're having a lot of trouble understanding how this is all happening. We're also having trouble understanding if the architectural review can put these kinds of requirements on the developer.
Yeah, that's...
To say people are concerned and upset, we believe the traffic study does not fairly measure the danger of 115th as it connects to Hazelbrook. The people that live on that street and live on that corner report now that children, well, middle schoolers, I guess they look almost like adults, but anyway, young people, let's say, as they're walking to school from the apartments, are nearly killed every morning because there's a funny slope to the road as it comes down on Hazelbrook. And I know all of you are familiar with the streets, but if you drove that street, you would see that additional traffic on it is going to be a disaster. And the people who live on Hazelbrook, as well as Tuolton Road, well, you've seen the yard signs. The CIO President is alerting you to this, and we're trying to figure out how to get the community's opinions built in. When the developer meets with the community and there is no city staff, there's no confidence that the developer is telling the city staff what they heard. In fact, they're almost positive, after Autumn Sunrise and the problems they had at Autumn Sunrise, that the developer, when they have the neighborhood meetings, is not fairly telling the city what the neighbors say. And Autumn Sunrise is yours, Tim.
Yeah. I mean, really what this boils down to, I mean, and it's not even, Autumn Sunrise. It turned off. There we go. And it's not just Autumn Sunrise, it was the proposed high-rise project on Norwood as well. Overall, there's a collaboration problem between developers and neighborhoods and the city. And part of that is spoken to in a few different ways. One is the requirements for who in the community gets notified. It seems that the requirement doesn't reach far enough for the residents that are likely And there is room for more collaboration in the process. After the experiences that Byram has had, has had over the last couple of years, I'm still generally very skeptical of developers. However, the current developer working on developing the Norwood site has unnecessarily had multiple community engagement meetings, and as a result, there is, from the feedback I've gotten from residents, is more understanding and buy-in to the project, and it is, people are better informed, so their emotional responses are not as intense. And the lack of communication with the Autumn Sunrise project and the initial Norwood high-rise project, that really seemed to be the, what things boiled down to, is that ineffective communication on the front end, based on the limited requirements, led to a lot of emotional reactions and very intense conversations.
And then a success story. Stein Oil wanted to put a gas station. The developer actually listened to the neighborhood, which was Janine's, and decided not to. And I think the city council has, I hope, followed up and limited gas stations being within, what is it, 1,000 feet?
There's just not to be any gas station at that area because of the residences.
Yeah, but there's actually some sort of, I don't know what the regulation is. Developers who listen to the neighborhoods are rare. Stein Oil listened.
Yeah.
They actually listened. It's when they don't listen that we're concerned, and there's no city representative there seeing them not listening. And their report on what they heard doesn't match what the neighborhood thinks. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay. So solve it tonight, would you? So at a minimum, we would like to see city staff member to attend these meetings.
That sounds right. They shouldn't identify. They could just sort of hide out in the corner, get the accurate information.
And then this one, Robert Kellogg, former city councillor and former IBAC President and current CIO Board Member, met with us to talk, to recommend that we form Oregon Nonprofit Incorporated. It would be a couple hundred dollars a year, and we would have to take it out of the grant money. He pointed out all the advantages, and true to form, we are going to talk about it with our individual boards, but we have not yet decided. But we wanted to let you know that this was something we were considering. We were advised by Robert that this is not a violation of the ordinance, nor our bylaws, but we would be separate Oregon corporations if we did it.
I'll just add into that why we think it's important to perhaps incorporate, and it falls back on the insurance matter. So I looked at, I contacted a lot of insurance companies to see if we could get insurance for our CIOs on an ongoing basis, and the first question was, well, what kind of an entity are you? And we couldn't even get past the first question to see if we, as, you know, leaders of these organizations, could even apply for and secure insurance. Becoming a nonprofit corporation would allow us all to be insured and give us a layer of protection individually, as we continue to volunteer on behalf of the CIOs.
So to recap, we would like to meet with you once a year, so we don't hit you with five different things. We'd like you to solve the developer crisis by 7:00 tonight, if you can't, can. We want you to be aware, we're considering incorporating, and we'll let you know. We want an increase in the maximum grant amount by CIO, even though not all CIOs use the grants. The reason that it varies is depends on how active the CIO is and what's going on in the CIO. So anything else on the recap?
I don't think so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
The map. You doing the map?
Oh, yeah, and redo the map. Yes, redo the map.
Thank you. I forgot about that, that sticky staff project. Yes, we definitely think it should be done.
Do you have any questions for us?
Questions for the CIOs, representatives of CIOs, I should say. Council President Pratt.
I'm wondering, like, when you're looking at the nonprofit thing, I live in the Martin Ozzie Woods CIO, and I, sometimes there's a problem getting board members, and Sally works really hard at it, but it's still a challenge. So do you have any concerns that you won't have a treasurer to kind of track things in any of these CIOs, since you have seven, eight of them?
Yeah, I have a concern that we will have more of an inability to secure seats on the boards without being incorporated, because the personal liability is far more extensive. I personally, myself, feel that if we cannot incorporate and have insurance, that I'll step down from this position.
Then my second question is, most boards I've served on, you also have errors and emissions insurance to cover the board members.
Yeah. I skipped over that bullet point in my desire to complete on time. That's exactly why Robert recommended that we do it, because without incorporating, we cannot get the insurance, and we're naked without it.
Right. No, I totally understand where you're coming from. And the last thing I just wanted to mention was the whole idea of having the annual meeting. I fully support that, because to me, you're telling us what the community has to say, and if we could have a meeting with, you know, at least the presidents from each CIO, and then we could hear what the big community concerns are, and then like, like with River Park right now, we can hear if there's a specific concern that's affecting, you know, one of the CIOs in particular. So I think that's a big part of the role of the CIOs, and so it's important that we do hear from you.
Well, I'll just repeat what Janine said. You have to notify them about the meetings.
Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. So I think my questions are more for the city as like, as a follow-up, but some of the things that I'd be interested in, as far as like changing the boundaries, like what is the time investment and cost in that study, and then change. And then for the increase in the amount for the CIOs, where would that money come from? So I'd be interested in learning about that. I also fully support an annual meeting. I think that that's very important, and I appreciate you bringing that up. And I love the comment about more communication equals more trust and peace of mind, and I think that that's a great point. And then one last note. I was just curious, how many people attended the IBAC Byram event?
We didn't have a head count, per se, but, I don't know, what do you think, Tim?
I thought it was about 200 total.
Yeah.
And then River Park, how many did you guys have?
I think we had over 200, yeah.
We didn't have a head count, per se, but, I don't know, what do you think, Tim?
I thought it was about 200 total.
Yeah.
And then River Park, how many did you guys?
I think we had over 200, yeah.
Councilor Reyes.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm at the Midwest CIO, and I understand the inflation and last time you were granted $1,500 was in 2013, so that's a long time ago. So, I'm seeing the overdue on that. But I, I do have a couple of questions on that, because I rarely, and I was saying rarely using it kindly, get, get notified from my CIO president of what's going on within my community. Like, I, I've never, I never hear, I don't even, I don't think the person's here representing. Oh, you are? Okay. And I wish I have more, we can do more in our community, because I rarely hear anything, what's going on, what are we focusing on. So, I think I want to see more of that in my community. That way, we can, we can really become that CIO that, that will be cohesive. And like I said, I'm not opposing to that, but I do want to see something going on in my community. And so I rarely, rarely know what's going on. I wish we have other ways of communicating. I don't know how we're communicating to our community.
You get a postcard that gives you the meeting date. Sharon?
Midwest, I can speak for Midwest.
Yeah, yeah, love to. Yeah, we love to. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Noel. I'm treasurer for Midwest. I, I got to tell you that we were planning a national night out and a fall, and we'll have a winter meeting, and we were going to have maybe a fall event. We had traditionally had a national night out, and just as we started to plan, the ugly head of insurance, and, oh, we're not going to pay for your yard signs anymore. We're not going to pay for the water or the cookies. We're not going to pay for the printing of the things that normally we hand out. Right? All right, but there's a, there was a kibosh to a lot of the things that we had grown accustomed, and the insurance. We're not going to pay, we're not going to cover you. And not only that, because it has so much light right now, you may not without it. And so, we just said, fine. We spent, we routine, and we were one of the CIOs that didn't spend. But for the last three years, we spent like, every dime. And we were just starting to get, you know, momentum. Our annual, we, our biannual, all our things say annual, but our bylaws say twice a year. We have enough to do maybe one half of what you've charged us to do without the insurance. Okay? And so, we just stopped. We just said, you know, we have this great team of people who are putting together a lovely presentation of how we're kind of in a financial catch-22. We don't want to lose our grants, and, but we need to be able to fundraise, and we need to be able, we need coverage for insurance. There's a lot of things that underpinned the ability for us to service the, our communities, you know? And like, Midwest was originally, well, all the CIOs were originally chartered, the residential ones, were chartered to be 5,000 households. And you're right, they're all like, bumpy and growing out in different ways now, so that would be great. But, you know, we know where they are. We really don't have a, a listing or a way to track who is interested, because we don't have that support. Nextdoor is not the good place to find out. We know where you live, but we don't know what you care about, or, you know, who we could recruit. I'm really good at that, but I don't know how to do it with what, with the base information that is available through the CIO leadership. So, I want you to know, we would and we will, but we need funding.
So, you stopped because you weren't being funded and supported by?
City.
By the city?
Yeah.
That's, and how long ago was that, was that?
Last, the last one we had was in spring.
Because I remember an ice cream, an ice cream kind of.
That was the last national night out, which was pre-COVID. Remember, COVID kind of kiboshed everything. But we've had our two annual meetings. Last year, we had one, this one in the spring. And now, we're just, we're just waiting to see, we'll, we'll get refunded, but we'll still only have enough for half of the event without coverage. And so, you know, we'll do what we can, and we have very, we have people available who will work, and we're good at recruiting if there's a hope. But we're not going to do that.
Sure, okay.
And we really, we really depend on the annual meeting for the neighbors to come and attend. And, and that's our form for reaching out to the, to our neighborhoods.
And you send a postcard to every household?
Yes, well, when we can afford it. Our last one, we didn't have enough, and so, I don't know what we sent to, but it was fewer. And Megan tries to help us, but she can only help us to the ability that she can. And her bucket was pretty spent, you know, because we were asking her bucket to get increased as well as the grant bucket, so.
So, you support the increase to 2,500, Sharon?
At least.
And is that 2,500 divided in the six CIOs, or is that just based on needs?
It's per CIO.
Per CIO, 2,500.
Twelve thousand dollars.
And what we've done in the commercial CIO is we've had businesses fund our expenses. So, there's other ways to do things, but the residents have a hard time doing that.
Is there anyone here from the east side CIO?
No. Doug Olmert's on vacation.
Okay. And does he, does he participate, and does he say the same thing that is he on, on board?
All of the CIOs agreed to this. Some of them thought we could ask for more.
The 2,500 was a compromise.
Yes.
It's based on inflation. It's nothing, and it's nothing to the city. So, you might say, make it sound like it's big, but that's a joke.
What's the city's annual budget?
Thank you.
What is the city annual budget? It's a lot more than, you know, 12 or 15.
We've read the city budget, so we're aware that we are not even around here.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for coming out. I'm really glad that we're doing this, and I think that we were at the advance, and I kind of brought up that I think we should have listening sessions, so I'm super happy it's happening. So, I'm glad that you're here, and I'm learning a lot. I have confusion over when you're talking about doing a 501(c)(3). Is it for all the CIOs together? You're going to have seven different ones?
So, it, each CIO is its individual organization.
Okay.
And there's a reason for that. IBAC doesn't want to be told what to do from Midwest, and on and on.
Yeah.
So, it would be individually decided, and then mapped out and executed, or not. So, for example, IBAC may say, we don't want to be incorporated. We have no interest in that. Then, we wouldn't. Or conversely, I'm going to push for that.
Okay. I, I think there might be more options with organizational design and still having autonomy, but, which might be something to really look at, just because for board members and all that. I'm not telling people what to do at all. I'm just saying that I'm not sure if it's just that.
You bring up a really good point. And, and I think that it could use further discussion, for sure. But the way the organizations are set up right now, there's autonomy from each CIO to each CIO. But what you just brought up, Bridgette, I think deserves conversation.
Yeah, I would want you to keep your autonomy, by the way.
Right.
For sure.
Yeah.
That was discussed, though, one or many.
Yeah.
It was discussed. And like, there is a labor and a dollar burden that comes with many, but there's also the autonomy and the fundraising of capability.
Well, and my thought is just with what you're trying to do as your mission, do you want to create a bunch of different little bureaucracies, or do you want to have more hands-on deck for the things that you want to do, and, you know, have people designated from each one to serve on the general board? That's just my thought around it, but I'm not telling you what to do. I just was wondering aloud. The other question that I have, well, it seems that the insurance has changed. Is that what's happening?
It's complicated, but it's the.
Tell us. That's what it's about.
CIS will not, our insurance carrier will not cover CIO events, because they're a separate entity. They're not under the city's insurance. Correct?
Okay.
Yes.
And then the budgets have changed, or? No. Okay. So, you're talking, okay. And then, to me, it makes sense that there's inflation and that things cost more money. When we were talking about the conversation around specifically the lamb and those conversations, I also agree that when there's better rapport, that there's trust. And even if everybody doesn't get 100% what we want, there's a process and a transparency that is healthy for neighbors, whether they're neighbors with residences and businesses, or people with fence lines, or whatever. So, I think that looking at how we're doing communication, and also, I understand land use officers too can go to these, these meetings, the business meetings. I know we aren't really engaged, because a lot of times, there's decisions that can be made, so we don't want to have a, you know, a predisposition necessarily. But I think the idea of staff seeing and understanding, or if things are also carried on Zoom, so it's like a public meeting, so that a staff member could review it in the future, if they couldn't get there, because you could have a recording or something like that. That could be private just to staff, if we had a closed Zoom link or something like that. But I do think that we don't want to play telephone, is what it sounds like to me, and have misunderstandings that aren't necessary. It's hard enough just to work through things, so that totally makes sense to me. And there's also a lot of times where we, we don't really, you know, hear about things until there's a problem here. So, I think that the, the conversation around how easy is it to find the architectural review board? And as we're doing our new website, could we have like, a process with a map, like, this is where it is, this is where it goes next, you know, the architectural review board, this is the time that the, the person from the CIO is invited, the land use officer is invited, so that if we lose somebody or we lose leadership, that there's a centralized place that we can look, and also that there is a schedule of CIO meetings there, so that if somebody doesn't get their postcard, I didn't get my postcard, if somebody doesn't get their postcard, or maybe their husband threw their postcard away, or who knows what happened to the postcard, that we can look and take a look, because I've been wondering what's happening with the national night out. So, I think all the things to improve communication are just the road to health. And I also want everyone to feel protected. I know what it's like around liability insurance as a social worker. And, you know, it's, it's not, when people are drawn to service, like our mayor and coming through the CIOs, I think it's a place to foster community leadership and, and conversation and future electeds. And I think that we want to make it feel safe and comfortable and empowered, so that everyone has a voice. And a lot of times, it's the voices that are less amplified than somebody with a bunch of lawyers and, you know, stuff like that. So, anyway, that, I think that's all. I don't know what else. Oh, just the map. I mean, it sounds like a 5,000. And then when we said, when you said we were charged, you guys were charged to do it, did we charge people to do something, or did the, when they were formed, did they take that responsibility, or how's that work?
I'm not exactly sure of the context of the comment.
Um, Megan?
Just really quickly. So, there is a chapter in the 12th municipal code for the CIOs. And basically, what it says is, in a nutshell, is the CIO shall do certain things in order to be recognized by the city council. In practice, the city council has never taken away recognition from a CIO for not adhering to those standards. One of those standards is that they hold one general meeting a year, where they hold an election of officers, and then a second meeting in that year.
Okay. Thank you. Well, to me, it sounds just like making sure that things are functioning. And then if we didn't have one of those meetings, it would be a little bit of a red flag to make sure that everybody is still on board and it was working, so that we could take a look at it, make sure to find volunteers if we needed to. So, okay, thank you very much. It's been really helpful, and it's been a good learning experience. Thanks for everybody taking their time out tonight.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So, thank you very much for your volunteer, first and foremost. And I am super encouraged by you being here and telling us what you need and communicating with us. I think everything you had said is, sounds very reasonable to me, especially on the increase in your budget. It's very important. So, I'm highly encouraged. I have one comment, simply because I have lived in Toallton for 12 years. And for the longest time before my community involvement, I did not know what CIO meant at all. I didn't know what it meant, so I just drove by the sign, no big deal. Even now, as I sit in council, every once in a while, I have to look it up. What does CIO stand for? I have asked a couple of times, if possible, we can just spell it out, because I like the word community involvement organization better than just CIO. You know, this is an acronym that we, because we have limited time, limited budget, limited, we need to communicate who we are. And CIO doesn't communicate that anymore. I'm sure at one time it did. So, I would like to revisit the name. Could it just be community involvement organization? And then, I mean, that says what it is, just so that more people can know what it is and maybe be more involved. So, on the other items you guys brought up, I'm sure that we're going to have discussions and, and help wherever we can, of course. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. I, I actually agree with you that we could spell it out. People don't often understand what acronyms are. I, I'm old, and so I certainly don't understand all of the children's, you know, LOL and whatever. But I also think that, back to the postcard you had mentioned, did, did you get the postcard? Did you see the postcard? Did the husband throw the postcard away? I think it could use a revision, because when you get the postcard, it is just print. There's nothing that makes it stand out. It's not recognizable, that it's something that you even want to look at. And so, I think for a lot of people, when they pull their mail out, it's part of the recycle piece that goes in the bin.
Now, the city has been doing a better job of promoting it on their Facebook page. Again, kudos to Megan. And on the city newsletter, and we are trying to define it. It's defined on our website, which the city owns and funds, but we maintain. So, we've been working on this because of the issue that you've, there's also, I forgot until you mentioned it, in the ordinance, we're actually called the citizen involvement organization. So, as we're changing the boundaries, we probably should change the name to community, because five years ago, we voted to, to change the name. So, what's in a name? Your point is well taken. But the city has been trying to get that information out. We just haven't, it's an uphill battle.
Oh, a question, or a favor to ask. You know, really great, oh, well, only a suggestion. And I don't know when you'd, or how you'd implement it, but it would really be great if we had knowledge goals for our citizens, or community members, you know what I mean? The people who live and work in Toallton. Because, you know, I think that people who pay attention, they get a lot of information. But there's no, you know, like, teaser out there for the, to draw in the person who might be so full of information and energy, but they just haven't gotten the reason to become knowledgeable. You know, we have 12th in life, we have the Facebook, we have a lot of things, but without goals and questions in the survey, right? One of our surveys, we do enough of them, right? To figure out if they know something. To figure out if they know something about how they can become involved, right? And to make goals about what they should know to become involved, it seems to me would be very helpful to the likes of us, which would only benefit the likes of you. So that's all. Just something to think about, it'd be really great. I'll help if you want.
Is there another way of communicating besides the postcard? Or is that the only way of communicating? Are there emails that you collect, um, things like that, that are more directly to the person?
So the CIOs, they each, beyond the postcards, adopt what, what works for, for them. But that is a challenge, definitely, is having like a uniform way. And the way that our world's changed just since even 2011, I mean, yeah. Postcards, people don't look at their mail as much as they look at their email, for sure.
Right.
So each CIO does things a little differently. We do have yard signs that we put up for our annual meetings. But beyond that, for other events, we don't really get a lot of support. So Byram, through just the um, community events that really got a lot of people interested, we were able to really collect a lot of contact information that way. And so between Facebook and some email lists, we, we have a, a good sampling of people. But um, yeah, outreach to the people that we don't have contact info for is always a challenge.
And there's no collective?
Right, and even, even as we do collect email addresses, that's a very laborious process to have to manage, right? So who, who on the CIO board is going to be responsible for emailing the community on a regular basis? We all have our own lives too, and these are volunteer positions. So it, it is a very big challenge. Some people say next door is the way to go. I find that to be not the right answer, for a whole host of reasons.
But it, it does, people do come together where there's some, some major projects. Like for instance, when Norwood was having, I mean, people came together and you all got, you know, and we're like, wow. So people do get together and that's when you kind of capture information. I'm just, um, the, I'm with Councilor Brooks on, I'm a, I'm a nonprofit professional, so I kind of see her point about having each of you a 501(c)(3). It would be, I would, I would definitely talk to Kellogg about that, because I can see a lot of challenges. Whereas having one unity, and also it can create a little bit of inequity, because some CIOs are going to be a little bit different than others. Byram is very different from the ones on the east side. So there's, there's, consider all that stuff, consider ask a lot of questions, because before you form a 501(c)(3) of each six CIO, it's going to be, it's, if you, if, I can see the challenges, that's all I, I'm saying. You can do it however you think it will work best for you all. But definitely, I share the same sentiment, being in the, having been in the industry for my entire career.
Thank you for that. I, I would say that in order for us to form one corporation, we would have to restructure the way the CIOs are set up. So that would be the starting point of, of the dialogue.
And there is actually a structure we can follow for us old timers. There was a coordinating committee that was supposed to be formed and is actually described in our ordinance. The problem is, and I think this is fair comment, is that if it formed, it would become kind of a pseudo-city council, where they're trying to direct various neighborhoods. And one of the reasons why we've never formed it is because our entire function is our own area of concern. Mine, our own business, it's been sort of our direction. So you now can see why we haven't decided to do anything with the 501(c)(3) or the corporation. I hear your comments have been dead on. All of us have email lists, but that's been part of the change. People don't look at emails anymore. I mean, you know, we, we, but I have an email list, River Park does, and, go ahead, Ginny.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, what do we spend our money on? And we've heard like a park bench or when we hold a fair, and that a large part of that money has been sent for the CERT emergency kits. And we have two located in River Park, one at the Totenstow, the other is over up at my house, over in Pony Ridge area. But, and we have the volunteer CERTs assigned to each of these centers. So we have first aid kits, four trauma kits that can be for over 200 people, stretchers, I mean, all the stuff that we've learned in CERT to take care of folks. So that's been in preparation if the bad day happens, the earthquake, that our folks know where to go if they need help.
Your grant program has funded radios that are part of the emergency amateur radio system, which integrates in with the city's operations radios. So we, we've been productive, we're just cheap. We don't, we don't spend.
We're running out of time, I gotta, you know, one more thing, because we're running out of time.
Just back to that organizational piece, I do think there are ways you could do bylaws where it would just be administrative rules and not policy rules, and then each have, each one have their own policy directions. That's all I was going to say.
Good suggestion.
I want to thank you all for coming. I concur with my other city councillors about looking at the budget increase, the insurance, figuring out the not-for-profit, redoing the maps, once we hear what it's going to take. I just want to address Twalton Road and the Lamb project. I am getting emails, council's getting emails with people's concerns that they are being forwarded on to city staff. City staff is listening to them and Lamb is listening. There are, there were changes last week that you, you don't know yet, of changes and things, accommodations Lamb is trying to do. They are hearing the neighborhood. Are we going to let everything comes back? Look, as Councilor Brooks says, maybe not. But what they, what the community heard at their first public, neighborhood meeting is not the same anymore. That's why you haven't seen an app yet, because they are working with our transportation folks and stuff to come up with additional solu, uh, solutions to get people off of Twalton Road. But they are working on it, they are hearing you. It's just a matter that they're working it out with staff. But I encourage people to keep sending the emails. One of the things I like about the emails that have been coming, they've been very civil, as Bridget's saying, versus some of the nasty emails we got during Norwood.
But River Park needs to have that feedback, because I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm responding to every email I'm sent from residents, so.
Sort of under the bus a little bit there about, oh, River, River Park, they're handling this, and they're, what are we doing?
All right, but I'm sorry I had to cut you off, we got something coming up next.
Well, thank you for all this time. It's a whole half an hour more than we thought, so thank you.
All right. So what I'm going to do is time management. We'll do our council roundtable after our regular work, after city council meeting. Kevin, can you do your thing in 25 minutes?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay, so we'll give Kevin the 25 minutes and then we'll, the last couple, three minutes, we'll, we'll do, you know, when we go over consent, who's doing what. The floor is yours, Kevin. Item number two is review of council rules.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council, Kevin McConnell, City Attorney. This is your second review of the proposed revisions to the council rules your council review subcommittee forwarded earlier this year. As you remember, or maybe recall, on June 24th, the council had its initial review of the proposed revisions to the council rules. They appeared, in my opinion, to be well received. They covered a wide range of issues regarding council decorum, interactions amongst council members, public comment, and changing the rules to make sure that the, the rules on public comment met constitutional requirements. Council travel policy, changing the airfare provisions to allow for a premium economy class seat for councilors to be city, city paid under certain circumstances. Mandatory government ethics training and council rules training. And then virtual council meeting attendance. Now, after that meeting, several councillors had requested revisions to certain of those proposed revisions, further revisions of those. And those are listed in your agenda packet. All of the revisions are in red, and the proposed revisions or language to be deleted have been stricken through. But there were three main items the council wanted to see potentially changed back at the second review. One was Rule 8B1, and that was really clarifying the purpose and goals of having council rules working together. And what I did is I took a look at, based on council's direction, the city of Tigard's, their language, and I attempted to incorporate some of that language into the proposed revision to Rule 8B1. And then Rules 8B4 and 5, there was a discussion about council training on government ethics law and council rules. And the new language will have all of the required trainings happen within one year of a councillor assuming office, and then if reelected, within one year of reelection. And then finally, at that council meeting where you reviewed the rules, there was an additional revision requested to be made, and that went to Rule 1G2J, Councillor Communications. And really just to clarify what type of communications would be proper under that specific agenda item and that language, I have attempted to take what the council would like and put that into something that made sense. So, Your Honor, I know we are on a crunch for time, but what I plan to do is just open it up to you and the council, and we can go through these rules. Again, I think that Bates is ready to pull up specific pages if we need to, but it is in the packet, the new language is in red.
Do you want it pulled up?
Do you want to, are you going to bring it up, Bates, or?
And really, Your Honor, it's just what proposed revisions would the council like to discuss, and we can certainly do that.
Okay, so I'll open it to the floor for, yeah. Hopefully you had a chance to review Kevin's refinements from the last meeting. Is there any additional tweaks you're looking for tonight? Council President Pratt.
I just have a question on, I think it's Rule Number 1J that you were, the council community, right there. So it's still unclear to me, like you're saying, as well as city or community events, but I'm going to pull up a couple different specific situations, like when Councilor Brooks had the Sustainability Network with me on the Police Foundation, with Councillor Hillier on Twalton together. Well, that's our private interest, but it's also a community interest. So are we okay to speak to those? Like if we're having an event for the Police Foundation, or I'm just updating on the Police Foundation's activities? Is that my private interest, or is that for the betterment of the community? Because it's kind of both to me.
Well, thank you, Council President. I think it, the overarching goal is that, that these communications should involve a city interest. They can certainly involve a personal interest, but, but overarching, it will be a, a city of Twalton interest in some form, whether that's a, a regional organization, a city committee, whatever it might be. And ultimately, the council rules allow the council to decide whether the, that the rule has been violated. And that's through another proposed revision that the, the presiding officer, when the mayor is here, that's who that is, to preserve order. And there's certainly a way to appeal decisions regarding decorum made by the presiding officer. So for example, if you were bringing up something and the rest of the council didn't think that had anything to do with city business, they could raise a point of order, and if you were out of order, they would vote, or the mayor would make a decision. There could be an appeal. If that, that appeal overturned the mayor's decision, you would just move on and not talk about it anymore.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Councilor Brooks.
So similarly, I guess my question is, we talk about community events, but I think that there's a focus sometimes just on community. And sometimes we recognize a football player that did really well, or, um, I just think that it's good to talk, be able to talk about the community. If there was somebody that was visiting to the community, I think it would be good to talk about it. If there's somebody notable, a dignitary, if there's outstanding things happening in our community, so. And then the events and the initiatives that, um, I just think for me, even just with our last conversation, that whole idea of community engagement, like I know our staff works really hard on the community engagement, but I also want to be able to see every end road into communicating from this council and to this council as we can from the community. So that's just my, I don't like the just community events thing.
Well, thank you, Councilor Brooks. I can certainly add language if you have some proposed language. But I, I think that, you know, given what I stated previously about it's ultimately the council that decides what, what kind of language will be permitted, it certainly does talk about what's not permitted. And I think that it, it speaks to anything that's personal, like a political agenda or a, a solely private interest. Those are the things that aren't meant to be a part of these council communications. But other than that, if it in any way concerns generally the city, certainly fair game for a councillor to raise. And if there's objection to that, you have a procedure to stop that conversation.
Okay, I just wanted to feel warm to the people that are serving, and that, that it's not ever confusing. Those are my thoughts.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So the way I understand it is that ultimately it is up to the mayor. So let's just say, for example, if any one of us is being dogmatic about a specific topic or subject that we continuously are bringing that up, that might have some parallel comparison to the city, but it's, we get the point. The mayor would say, okay, we've given you some time, it's time to bring it in. In, in, in brief, this policy revision allows for that, because the mayor still has the option and the council to listen to whatever we want to talk about. If it has to do with a community event or whatever it is. But I think it's written in a, in a good way that it still allows for the mayor to have control of the council and say, okay, it's time to cut that subject that we've already discussed, as you brought up several times already, and move on, so.
Councilor Gonzalez, I, thank you. That's, that's the, the intent here, and there is due process for the entire council. If they disagree with the presiding officer, there is an appeal process.
Councilor Sacco.
I'm changing subjects, if that's okay. Okay, um, Section H on attendance and meetings, I guess this covers sort of one through four, that whole section, I think it's page 13.
It, I, Bates, I think it's page 11.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
No, that's it.
That's, that's it.
Yeah. So just, and I'm, I'm seeking a little clarity for attendance at meetings, specifically for committee meetings. So on, under one, it talks about a council position becomes vacant if the council is, a member of council is absent from the city for more than 30 days. And then Section 2 talks about notifying the appropriate parties if you're going to miss certain meetings, including assigned committees. But it doesn't, nothing talks about what happens if attendance is not, is, if attendance is missing from certain committees. So the, the reason why I bring this up is that there might be some concern where we're not, we don't have presence on certain committees that are really important to the city to have representation at. And what is that expectation if somebody is absent from a committee for a certain period of time? Do we reassign somebody to that committee? Maybe it's a time issue. That committee meets during lunch and that person can't be available during that time, things like that. And I, so I just have some confusion around what is the process? Or how does that issue get raised if a council member cannot make or is not attending certain committees?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Sacco. So I, what you're referring to is Rule 2H3, or 2H2. So what you're referring to is Rule 2H3, or 2H2, actually. And how I read that rule is that what it essentially states is that if a member of council is assigned to a certain committee and they cannot make that meeting, they are by rule supposed to communicate that as soon as possible to the city manager. And I don't, I don't know the specific process internally about what happens when the manager gets notice of that, whether there is an alternate that is then notified to attend the meeting. But generally, it's fairly broad, it's not very specific. But the goal of the council rules is to obtain compliance. There is a Rule 10 as far as discipline for repeated violations of council rules. But generally, the presiding officer and the council, if there is an issue with a specific violation of a council rule, this albeit maybe a minor violation, is to just simply notify that counselor, then in future, please notify the city manager per this rule so we can get your alternate to that commission or committee.
So what if, and I'm just thinking, like, set up future councils for success, what if, one, the notification isn't happening, two, happening excessively? Or we just, so we don't know that we don't have representation at certain committees? Or we have a, and if nobody's being notified, then the alternate can't attend because they're not aware that that meeting is not being attended by a Twalton representative? So just sort of, like, is it, if there's, I mean, maybe this requires more discussion to make a decision of, you know, if a meeting is missed three times in a row or five times in a row. I don't know what the, you know, what the, I'm just making up numbers. But I don't know, maybe there's a need for more discussion on that. And I don't know if there's interest in the council wanting more discussion on that.
Yeah, certainly, Councilor Sacco, these are the council's rules. So if they want more specifics as to a council rule as far as what happens when a counselor is not notifying, missing required meetings, they can certainly do so. I can tell you in my experience that for minor violations in other municipalities, what happens is the presiding officer or manager will privately speak to that counselor about, hey, this is, just so you know, FYI, here's the council rule, please do this. And in future, we can get an alternate. The example you're giving about missing a committee meeting, that usually resolves the problem, as long as, maybe the counselor doesn't know that it's an issue. And if there are repeated violations, like three to four to five, there is a Rule 10 here. There is provisions for public reprimand or other potential disciplinary proceedings that could happen if there's just refusal of that council, member of council to comply with the rules.
It could be that, that you want another, like, 2A or, I mean, something specific about assigned committees. It's like, maybe the assigned committees is stuck in here with council meetings and work session meetings that are different than the assigned committee. Because like, like, like a repair for that might be reassigning, right? The committee, as opposed to like a public reprimand for not showing up to council meeting ever, or something like that. So maybe it is about, like, crafting something about what to do about assigned committees.
That's certainly one thing that could happen. Also, I have seen in other municipalities, part of those disciplinary proceedings has been to remove that counselor from that assigned committee and give it to another counselor. Who can attend.
Council President Pratt.
I'm just making a point that whenever I've not been able to make a meeting, I notify the alternate and I notify whoever's in charge of that meeting. I never go to Cheryl and just because I don't want to put one more thing on her plate. So if I need to do that. But I just want to let the person running the meeting and I let the alternative know. And then I let the person running the meeting know that they will be there in my place. So I'm not sure if this procedure should go through you or not.
Right, that's why I would, I would kind of call this an assigned committee out because it seems appropriate that the rule would be that you notify your alternate and you notify the person in charge, the staff liaison for the meeting. So like, for planning commission, although there's not a, like, art committee. Like, that you would notify your alternate and you would notify Ross or Julia.
And then my other thing is there's, I know there's been times where it's just, especially like these lunchtime meetings, and it gets difficult for those of us working. So like, there's a clear procedure to notify when that timeframe of that meeting just isn't available to you anymore, to make sure someone else replaces you.
So you're saying you don't figure it out until the last, to like, maybe a half hour before?
Well, no, like, say you're, notify your alternate first. I don't know, you're going to, you're going to a meeting and maybe they change the time. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe they change the time or that time no longer works for you, that you're obligated to notify Cheryl and or you or whoever so someone else can replace you.
Your alternate, yeah.
Yeah, something like, if you're not able to consistently make the meeting, you need to let somebody know and you can be.
Reassigned.
Reassigned, yeah.
Council Brooks.
I was going to say similar thing. I've always just traditionally reached out to my alternate, but I like the fact that you brought up to include Cheryl and because I think CCing Cheryl is a good idea. And because then you, there's accountability. And then if it's happening in different quadrants, people know because usually one or two miss meetings. But if it's happening in different committees, then it might be a sign that somebody just really isn't that into committees.
Anything else on this one? So whatever, we want to add some verbiage around council assignments and that on H3, we're okay with it because we have the guardrails of the presiding officer can stop someone or someone can ask for a point of order and, you know, a vote can be taken and the discussion ends, correct? Council Brooks.
I just want to talk about virtually attending. When I virtually attend, sometimes I turn my camera off when the presentation's going so that I can just relax a little bit when we're on Zoom. But I always have it on when I'm speaking, unless for some reason I was sick and I didn't want to be on camera and I looked terrible or something like that. So I just was wondering around the virtual, it's number four on page 11, if the virtual, how people feel about the virtual video capacities. And sometimes too, I'm walking around to get something or whatever, and then I'll turn it off because I don't want people to feel dizzy. Because somebody's complained about that.
Wasn't your concern quorum that someone could turn their camera off and basically walk away?
Yep.
And whereas when we're sitting here, you can't?
You're correct, Mayor. And Councilor Brooks, I think that the rule can be read to address your situation. So how it specifically reads, the pertinent language is members of council are expected to have their video turned on. So how I have seen this work in other municipalities, if you just simply notify the council that I'm going to turn my camera off so I can eat something so you don't have to watch me eat. And then that, we know, we know you're there. We've preserved quorum. And you turn your camera back on when you finished eating or you feel comfortable turning it back on.
Okay. I just like those procedures because I never want to feel like I'm making a mistake. Like, you can just messenger or something like that, what we're doing. Because that's helpful to me right now. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, so just one more small change for you.
All right. Thank you, council.
So the process would be that we would come back, the next time we come back would be under general business with the resolution with these changes plus the small additional, additional changes, that the?
Yeah, Cheryl and I will have some suggested language, given the comments today. I'll run that through you, and then it'll be a resolution for amendments of the council rules as proposed, and we will move forward.
All right. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight, meeting, Councilor Sacco, you're up for a pledge of allegiance. Does anyone have an issue? Let me scroll back up on the items on consent. All right. I have one proclamation about Constitution Week. We'd like to do the Constitution Week proclamation. You haven't done it in a while. All right, Council President Pratt will do that one. Anything, I think that's everything, so we've got a few minutes here. We'll go ahead and close this meeting. And you got a six-minute break, it looks like, for, before we start our meeting at seven o'clock.
And Mayor, just to point out that the members of the Constitution Week folks will want